Good evening. I have seven o'clock and I call a meeting to order. But just a short announcement, YouTube and Facebook will not be live tonight. It'll be uploaded later. Apparently there's some technical difficulties. So that I'll call the, ask the clerk, call the roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jeff Elshoff.
Here.
Dr. Joel Schroder.
Here.
Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And Ms. Diane Nguyen, I believe is absent. And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to opening prayer. Father Sherry Hedrick from Church of Resurrection on 37th in Bel Air is here to lead us in prayer.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, as the City Council of Bel Air gathers, we begin this meeting by looking to you in the name of your Son, Jesus. We thank you for the promise that when we look to you, in his name, that you will be present with us by your Holy Spirit. So we continue to give you thanks that you are a good and gracious God, abounding in mercy and steadfast love. Therefore, we pray for all those in authority, for the President, for the Senate, the House of Representatives, and for all the leaders of the nations. But specifically, we pray this night for the Bel Air City Council, especially for Mayor Jim Benage and the council members, and all the leaders of this community, especially for our first responders, law enforcement, EMS, and firefighters. Tonight, we pray that you will reveal to the City Council the knowledge of your will in all wisdom and spiritual understanding in order that they may be fruitful in their service. Anoint them with the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose for the common good, they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people in the Bel Air community. Grant that they may love mercy, do justice, and walk humbly with you. Finally, we remember the gospel that God was in Christ reconciling the world to himself. May each of us be ambassadors of that same spirit of reconciliation and peace. And we ask all this in the strong and wonderful name of our Savior, Jesus, who lives and reigns with you, Heavenly Father, and the Holy Spirit, our advocate and guide, the one who dwells within us and abides within us, witnessing to our spirits that we belong to you. And so we bless you, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to proclamations. So we now have Home Rule Day. So the League of Kansas Municipalities is celebrating the 60th anniversary of the Home Rule Amendment to the Kansas Constitution. Before 1960, a state statute was required to authorize the city to act on a particular issue. The city had no power to act at the local level. Since 1961, Kansas has been a home rule state via constitutional amendment, meaning that the people of Kansas have decided that their primary, they primarily prefer their local governments rather than the state making decisions for their communities. The basic power granted to cities by the Home Rule Amendment are included in these few words. Cities are hereby empowered to determine their local affairs and government. On the one hand, Home Rule grants cities the power to legislate their local affairs and government. On the other hand, it restricts the power of the state legislature to treat cities differently and to enact binding, non-uniform restrictions on local affairs. So the proclamation is Home Rule Day for October 11th, 2021. To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas greetings. Whereas on November 8th, 1960, the voters of Kansas approved a constitutional amendment granting cities' home rule authority, the Home Rule Amendment took effect in Kansas on July 1st, 1961. Home Rule gives local government, specifically cities, the power to make decisions at the local level based on the unique needs and values of their residents. And whereas cities across their great state manage differing opinions and views on issues ranging from zoning to flooding for local services, funding for local services and programs, Home Rule keeps control of the community in the hands of local residents. And whereas the Home Rule Amendment empowers cities to determine local affairs and government actions, including the levying of taxes, fees, charges, and other extraction. And whereas the city of Bel Air and the League of Kansas Municipalities cities continually work to educate and engage municipal officials, the legislature, and the general public about the importance of Home Rule and the local decision-making. And whereas the 60th anniversary of the passage of constitutional Home Rule is a fitting time for all municipalities to engage their residents about the Kansas Constitution and local laws, so that all Kansans may continue to receive the many benefits of Home Rule. Therefore, I, Jim Benage, Mayor, do hereby proclaim October 11th, 2021, as Home Rule Day in the city of Bel Air. So we'll move on to item six, determine agenda additions. Are there any agenda additions to consider? Hearing none, I'll move on to item seven, the consent agenda, which contains only the minutes of the September 21st, 2021 council meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Elshoff.
I motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Elshoff and second by Mr. Welch. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Discussion and approval of appropriation ordinances. So this reporting period is much larger due to capital improvements and bonding projects of 1.24 million. Invoices totaling $147,765 from PP&amp;J for Oliver Street repairs was paid. Gilmore and Bear Bell invoiced $41,500 for GO Bond 2021A refinance and Temp Note 2021B issuance. Engineering and contractor invoices for bonded projects accounted for the remaining balance of the $1.2 million.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance 21-18.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Dr. Schroder. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address counsel? Hearing none, I'll move on to council member reports. Mr. Smith, would you like to begin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the CCUA meeting on September 23rd. The main action taken at the CCUA meeting was the purchase of four large storage tanks for chemicals. Previously, the CCUA had been purchasing some of the chemicals they use to treat the wastewater with totes that had to be delivered in this purchase for $8,000. Will allow the CCUA to purchase those chemicals in bulk. And that $8,000 will pay for itself in about eight months if our calculations were correct. And so that was the main action that was taken at the CCUA meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Elshoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the September 23rd CCUA meeting, and I concur with Councilman Smith's assessment of what actions we took there. Secondly, I'd just like to say that on September 27th, I was invited to attend the Bel Air Senior Clubs Meeting, their monthly meeting. The month previously, I had been invited by the club to be the featured speaker of the night. And I guess what prompted that was, as you may recall, July 7th and 2020, I had a liver transplant. And as people have asked me how that's, how that went and how I'm doing and all of that, I've been more than happy to share my experience, and it's been a very positive experience. And I don't know, I, it was just something that some of the seniors in our city had, had thought about, and they thought it might be interesting to have me talk about it, and I certainly was happy to do so. So I had a great time. They invited me. I had dinner with them. Our seniors are just very dear, sweet people. They're, they greeted me, and I was just overwhelmed with their kindness and their, their high spirits. And I could tell that my time with them meant a lot to them. And I just had a, I had a really great time visiting with them and speaking with them, answering questions. They had a lot of questions about my experience and, and all of that, and that was just really great. So I was happy to do it, and that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Schroder.
I have a report.
Mr. Welch.
I was asked to speak to the Boy Scouts of Troop 565 at Resurrection on September 28th about the duties and responsibilities of a citizen. I was a bit worried about it at first, but I got over there. They were very welcoming. They asked me a lot of good questions. We, I was supposed to talk for 15 minutes. We ended up talking for 30, so I think it was a very productive discussion we had. And I'd like to thank them for hosting me.
Very good. Thank you. I'll move on to Mayor's report. I also attended the CCUA meeting on September 23rd, but I have nothing to add. Did a good job telling what was going on, so thank you. On September 26th, the former Bel Air City Councilmember Guy McDonald passed away in Overland Park. Guy was a charter member of the Bel Air Lions Club, a one-term city council member and longtime tree board member. Please keep Guy and his family in your prayers. A big thank you to the city staff for getting the woodlawn ditch at Danbury fixed on Saturday, September 25th. I was already getting positive feedback from citizens on Sunday, September 26th. Have a great job getting that done. On Saturday, September 25th, I did attend also the Sedgwick County Association of Cities. We did not have a quorum, so no official business could be done. We took a tour of the Kansas Health Science Center under construction in the old Ennis Macy's Building in downtown Wichita. This looks like a, be a very cool teaching facility for future doctors of osteopathy, more commonly known as DOs as opposed to MDs, but equally qualified to practice medicine. There will be a lot of 3D learning tools and mannequins for the students to learn and train with. If anyone gets a chance to tour this facility, you should take it. It's very worthwhile. So on Monday through Wednesday, September 27th through the 29th, I represented Bel Air in Washington DC as part of the Kansas Chamber of Commerce fly-in. This was in conjunction with the Wichita Chamber of Commerce as well. It was a very good opportunity to meet folks around Kansas who have an interest in Kansas commerce. We met with the entire Kansas delegation in Washington DC individually, some more than others, but both US senators and all four members of Congress. There were four major pieces of legislation being considered during our trip. Infrastructure continuing education resolution, increasing the debt ceiling limit, and the $3.5 trillion spending package. None of these passed while we were there, but members of Congress were called back for votes while we were meeting with us, so. They never voted on any of those things while we were there, though. I don't know if they were voting on, but they were being called back constantly, so. We did hear from various groups and their thoughts on issues related to commerce, including the National Association of Manufacturers, US Chamber of Commerce, and Americans for Prosperity. We also met with one of the 12 Federal Reserve System Governors, Michelle Bowman, Michelle Bowman. She is a native Kansan, so she was actually appointed during the Trump administration, I think, to the Board of Governors. Of course, Bel Air is interested in these issues as they affect demand for goods that could be made here in Bel Air. And in the evenings, we did tour the National Cathedral, although I was on a later flight, so I kind of took a self-guided tour of the cathedral, but it's still pretty cool. Former Senator Pat Roberts worked for 21 years to get the Eisenhower Memorial built. He gave us a nice tour of that memorial in overview. And lastly, we did a Potomac River cruise. I am hopeful some of the connections made during this trip will benefit Bel Air. Derby Mayor Randy White and I got better acquainted during this trip, as neither of us knew a lot of people there. Of course, by the end of the basically one and a half day trip, we were acquainted with many more folks. So future things coming up, the K254 Corridor Development Meeting is scheduled for October 15th at 11:30 in El Dorado. KTA engineer Glenn Scott will be giving a presentation on current and upcoming Kansas Turnpike Projects. A candidate forum is sponsored by the Bel Air Senior Club on October 13th at 7:00 PM in the Bel Air Rec Center. Another candidate forum is being sponsored by the Bel Air Chamber of Commerce on October 21st at 7:00 PM here at Bel Air City Hall. I think it's in the community room. These are good opportunities to ask candidates of their views on issues important to citizens. The Vietnam Moving Wall is coming to Valley Center. So the Moving Wall is a half-size replica of the Washington DC Vietnam Veterans Memorial, and it has been touring the country for 30-plus years. The wall contains names of over 58,000 people who lost their lives from the Vietnam War. The Moving Wall will be making its return to Lyons Park in Valley Center, October 21th through 25th, 2021. On October 26th, excuse me. On October 26th, 6:00 PM, Bel Air was holding an open forum on the issues of merit terms and term limits. All citizens are encouraged to attend and provide their input on these ideas. There is feedback, a feedback form available on Bel Air website. And lastly, the KDHE website reports 51.8% of Kansans vaccinated against COVID. That's only a 0.8% increase in the last two weeks. And I asked one of the news stations why they were reporting 65% and found out that they are actually reporting those eligible. And KDHE on the website I'm looking at is reporting total Kansans, so that's the difference in the numbers. Okay? Sedgwick County reports an infection rate of 7.07% as of yesterday. That's the lowest it's been since July 21st. So maybe we are beginning to see the end of this current wave. Please continue to be safe, wash hands often, practice six-foot distance, and wear a mask if you've not been vaccinated. Let's continue to support each other. I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly wanted to make the public aware that the opioid litigation that happened early last year and the year before has been finalized, and we're starting to see those, the plans for those settlements coming back into the state. Right now, the league is reporting that cities over 10,000 are being asked to fill out paperwork, and our turn will come soon. 25% of those funds will be going into the Municipal, Municipalities Fighting Addiction Fund. So that's all set aside, and the determination for the total funds to pull that 25% fund, 25% out of will come from the number of cities that fill out the paperwork. So when our turn, our turn comes, we can fill out that paperwork. Also, just have received some concerns about sidewalks. I would just remind the public that if someone is walking and they notice a sidewalk in disrepair or in an unsafe condition, they can contact the city, and the city would go through the process of advising that property owner who's responsible for it. Or if it's a space where the city's responsible, we would send Public Works out to get it fixed. So that information just needs to be reported to the city. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. What's the best way for citizens to report those issues to the city?
I know we have a form on our website. Let me find out about the best way to report on the website, but certainly calling the front desk is efficient as well, because our front desk person can channel it pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant City Manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Saturday, October 16th, is Bel Air will be hosting the Fall Festival at the Rec Center. It's from 11:00 to 2:00. They'll have lots of kids' activities, a car show, food vendors, and live music this year. I think they had it last year as well. After you have fun at the Fall Festival, you can start cleaning your garage, because on October 23rd, we have the Fall cleanup, curbside cleanup. If you have unwanted furniture that needs to get rid of, you can carry it to the, carry it to the gutter and Waste Connections will start at 7:00 AM on the 23rd of October and have those items picked up for you. If you do plan on utilizing this service, I strongly suggest you access our website and get kind of the list of things that they'll accept and not. I don't want anybody trying to carry something to the side all for them not to pick it up. But it's a really nice service, and October 23rd is our Fall Curbside Cleanup. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Move on to item 12A, consideration of resolution matching funds for the Woodlawn project. So the city submitted woodlawn expansion from 37th to 45th to WAMPO for federal funding five years ago. The project was approved three years ago and is now at the construction phase. All utilities have been moved, and we are ready to select contractor for street work. The low bidder was Pearson Construction. As part of KDOT's process, the bid was received by the Secretary of Transportation and was found to be acceptable. Now, the City Council must approve the project and accept the bid in order for contracts to be signed and work started. Our city engineer, Anne Stevens, is here to explain the action and answer any questions. But before I'll ask her to come up, I do have some comments. So I request that we table this item and item 12B below. My reason is that we need to do some due diligence on this project. The project was budgeted at $6.8 million in February of 2019. That price is now $9.41 million, a $2.65 million increase. Forty percent. That is just shocking and unacceptable. The project is not what the people wanted from the survey we did. They wanted a five-lane with traffic light at 45th. The council at that time decided to go against the wishes of, and voted for a three-lane with a traffic light at 45th. I do not believe that we should just go along with a 40% price increase in a two-and-a-half-year period without some serious questions being answered. The estimates for 53rd between Oliver and Woodlawn are about $2 million for a one-mile street. Yes, it has a very different statement of work, SOW, if, when I use that term. But KDOT is saying this woodlawn project has a SOW worth five times the money for this one mile of road. That doesn't, that just fails the spell test. I do not accept that this is COVID. Maybe some is, but certainly not all. Some may be due to lack of sense of urgency to get the project moving. It is two years behind schedule. I talked about that a year ago. We heard of, could have hired a person $100,000 per year to bird dog this project and had more, been money ahead if those costs were cheaper before. I know the feds have their rules. We could build this, and I don't know if we could build this and get the quality of road we need if we contracted this ourselves for, for less than the $3.8 million that we are actually being asked to contribute. President Biden is forcing contractors to pay $15 per hour for unskilled newly hired construction workers. Not all companies are doing that, but those participating in these types of contracts are. Much of the materials are commodities. How much is the quote hedging these markets? Lumber skyrocketed this year, but has settled back to its January 2021 prices. Other commodities may do similar. So here's one of the questions we do. Table these items tonight until such time as staff most likely will include UKEC to come back with a more powerful proposal. Find other funds and grants. We put, we are putting a 10-foot wide bike pedestrian path. Are there any other grants available to fund that? Nancy Pelosi is sitting on a bipartisan infrastructure bill. Once passed, maybe there is money there for this project. Submit the cost increases to WAMPO for consideration. I understand WAMPO staff, WAMPO staff says no, but we should impress upon them how shocking these latest costs are to our budget. I understand our staff has started that process. Find other resources of funds, COVID or otherwise. Review the project. What is needed? What are nice to haves and what, and what cost reduction could we see if we eliminated some of the nice to haves? We need some outside, outside-of-the-box thinking, so here are some ideas to consider. And I'm not saying do these, I'm saying consider them. Others may have even better ideas. So one is, is a traffic light at 45th worth a $250,000 price tag. Maybe we could, should consider a four-way stop at 45th with a three-lane road. Wichita has a two-lane, five-lane intersection at 119th and 29th with a four-way stop and left-turn lanes. A left-turn bay will move traffic much better than curb arrangement. Are curb guttering and storm boxes worth the $1.5 million price tag? Will we be wiser with modified storm ditches? Maybe we even pave storm ditches, as was done at Maze and 37th Street. We just need out-of-the-box thinking on this. The target is to get funding and/or cost reductions so that the Bel Air citizens are not paying this additional $2.65 million. That being said, I'll open this for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welch.
I too have a lot of reasons why I don't want to do this project, but we also have a deadline from the state to respond to them by the 15th. So are we going to dedicate the entire workshop next week to this? Or are we going to schedule something special?
When, when did you get the 15th date?
That was in the paper somewhere. Is that not right?
I was told the 22nd.
November, you said October, what?
October 15th, I thought was the date. That's after our next council meeting, but that gives us only like two weeks to make a decision.
So the 22nd would be the 30 days after the bidding process. So the 22nd of October would be.
Okay, but that's still.
The drop dead, but Anne's been talking with KDOT a lot more on that type of scenario.
Mr. Welch, you are correct. The letter that we did receive from KDOT that it is in your packet, it says that we must receive the expected resolution on or before October 15th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor. What, what happens if we don't hit that date?
That's a very good question. Mr. Henry and I spoke with Kristin Zimmerman, a former member of the WAMPO planning staff, this afternoon to get a little bit more insight on two things. And she said in her 10 years of experience, nobody has ever rejected a bid. So this is kind of uncharted territory. I, I don't know. I do know our funding from WAMPO does have an expiration date. It is obligated. If it, if it does not go forward, then we lose that funding, and this would kind of put a stain on the city if we ever went.
and this would kind of put a stain on the city if we ever went back for it again. We have, this project has been designed several times. We have had funding several times, so that's something that needs to be considered along. And this is a large increase, so.
Well, I would ask us to really please get confirmation from whoever we need to get it from about what is that drop-dead date? And if we need to have a special meeting, then let's call a special meeting.
The drop-dead, according to the letter, is October 15th.
Yes, I understand. Can we get confirmation to that, please? Can you take that action, Mr. Henry?
Yes, we can, we can get confirmation. I.
I guess I'm not sure what confirmation you're looking for, other than the letter. I can certainly make a phone call to KDOT.
I understand, but I also understand sometimes dates get put in letters that are mistakes. And so I just want to make sure that we, the 30 days that I was being told is, was that's right?
There's been a lot of dates thrown around. I would say the letter, I, I don't know if, from a, from a standpoint, if we are going to meet on all these issues on the 12th. I think we could probably call a special meeting before the 15th and approve if need be. From a bonding standpoint, it'd be much better to earlier, the, earlier the better, because we want to get it in before the December, before the end of the year as well. So we're going to need to know the decision pretty much as soon as possible. I would, I would stress, so. But it's up, right now, we can go with the letter. Traditionally, like the mayor said, it's 30 days after the bid, but we've, KDOT's a different, different character, so.
KDOT also has their own policy, or their own processes that they need to go through once they do receive the approval from the city. So it's not likely to budge much further, if at all.
Mr. Mayor. Can you help me understand the WAMPO side of this? So I too was, you know, really disappointed to see, you know, how much, you know, this, this project came in at. You know, I know everything's going up, prices are going up on a lot of things, but that's a really significant increase over what we were expecting. And, you know, the whole premise of this project for the, the time that I've been on council is, you know, hey, Bel Air's paying for 20% of this. 80% of it is, you know, of the actual construction is going to be covered by WAMPO. And that was a key driver for moving forward with the original design of, of the road was because, you know, 80% is going to get paid for. If you want to revisit that, then you've got to revisit the whole funding of this program. And so it certainly is disappointing that now we're at, I think, you know, like 60% funding, sort of rough math there, instead of the 80% funding. What, what, what does the process look like to go to WAMPO and say, "Hey, our project came in way higher than we expected"? Is there any, you know, typically, it seems like the last couple of years, WAMPO's had funds left over at the end of the year, or nearing the end of the year. And I'm just not well acquainted enough with how WAMPO works to understand what that looks like.
Do you have any, anything to?
Yes.
Light the shed on that, please?
Yes. First off, and with all due respect, this 80% number has been thrown around a lot. When the projects are initially scoped, which was back in 2016, the, the funding request is made on an estimated basis. That's before any detailed engineering is done. It's a drawing up of quantities, adding contingencies, as well as other items. And that's what the initial request is based on. It's 80% of that construction cost. The award is made based on that estimate. As the city proceeded with design, more concrete construction costs were put together. And it was found that because of certain items, just, and I can't name exactly what they were, but as the, as the design is being finalized, you have more concrete numbers that you're working with for estimates, and that estimate increased. So we went back to WAMPO and requested an increase in funding to get to that 80% again. That 80% is the maximum amount of federal funding that anybody is allowed on the project. So after we went back the second time and were awarded the additional funding, we got to 80% of the estimate at that time. So then a contract or agreement was signed that said, "City of Bel Air, you will receive X number of dollars, period." There's no more 80% in the discussion. So it's, it's not 80%, it's that X number of dollars, the $5 million whatever that we receive. And so that's where a lot of the confusion is, when everybody keeps talking about 80%. It's not 80%, it's the X number of dollars that we were awarded. So that's the one thing. But coming back to WAMPO again, the, we talked again with Kristin Zimmerman. I spoke with Chad Perasa, the director of WAMPO. And both have said there is no more additional funding available for this Woodlawn project. The project has already been obligated from KDOT, which means that they have already programmed the funding, so there is no more money. In talking with Kristin this afternoon, she did state that they do work very closely with their clients and try and increase, try and get any suspected funding increases together prior to those obligations and along WAMPO's timeline. Yes, there is usually money left over at the end of the year, but that goes to projects that have not been obligated yet, projects that are still in the design phase that have not been bid out. Once that bid date is set by KDOT, you're locked in with the funding. So there, there's nothing more to receive there. I did reach out to Jay Engelmeier, and his estimate back in April, that was based on historical costs of KDOT and City of Wichita for the same bid items. Since then, there have been unprecedented cost increases, about 30 to 40% on a variety of items throughout the construction. So that's why we're seeing it. In looking at the bid numbers, they're actually pretty good based on bids that have been received on other projects. So it is a big decision to make. It is a lot of additional money that we were not planning on. But there, any, there, there are going to be ramifications if you choose to not do the project. There's going to be ramifications financially if you choose to do the project. But what the additional ramifications are if we choose to not move forward, that is something that we do not have answers to at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Welsh, did you have any more questions that you wanted to ask?
I have one question I'd really like to ask. All the money we've spent so far, none of that has been wasted at this point, has it? If we proceed three or four years in the future, we still get the benefit of everything we've already done, right?
That is correct. However, if we do wait three or four years, we will need to have one more look at the engineering and the design of Woodlawn, because things change.
Okay, but we spent money on right-of-way acquisitions and other things, and those are all still going to stay with us?
Well, the right-of-way was good for two years, so we are going to be running up against the, the right-of-way that we have purchased. Let me back up. The right-of-way that we have purchased, specifically along the intersection of 45th and Woodlawn, is good forever. That is city-owned property at this moment. The temporary construction easements that we have purchased were good for two years. And so proceeding on this timeline, if you make a decision today, we are going to be bumping up against the end date of those construction easements. And that is one more, you know, kind of unknown thing that we're not sure of. It was, we, when we obtained the easements, we thought we were looking for, far enough out in advance, but, you know, there's been a lot of unprecedented things that have happened in the last two years.
One other comment I'd like to make tonight, and if we talk about this later, I'll make it again. But the financing, I think, is the major problem with this project. If we finance this and we finance 53rd Street, we will have almost $0 again going into other street projects. And that will last quite a while while we pay off those bonds. Yeah, we'll, we'll be back down to $200,000 available per year, according to the projections I saw.
Mr. Mayor. Ted, could you talk about the, that a little bit and just kind of?
Can you get, let him answer, please?
So what I did on page 24 of the packet, if you look on line 31, this is our five-year forecast. I update every budget cycle. This year I did towards the end, because we were looking at this $3 million. All I did with the five years, added the new debt service it would take due to the overrun. So that's line 30. It's, we're going to add about $150,000 to our five-year that we thought wouldn't be there. So the new debt service for maybe a 53rd Street build, I set at $3 million for 15 years, which is the $230,000 a year. Now, that's pretty conservative. We've been hearing some $2 million, but I, I never like scaring you guys on the opposite way, if you know what I mean. So what I did is just include that $150,000. And all, all it does is changes our 30% reserves. So basically, usually we have a 30% reverb. It reduced it to 26 in 2023, 24 in 2024, 22 in 2025. So the difference is, is what we're going to have to make up each year through. The other big thing that is an unknown is, you know, look at the property tax line. I have an increase of 4% a year. Now, if you remember, the last two years, we've been around eight. We seem to be growing pretty fast. So if we beat those projections, that, that helps the underlying 30% that we need to make, or the, the underlying money we need to make up, as well as the special assessment line is still running at around $200,000 for the next three or four years until we get all this, all this land off our, off our books. So that, that could play a factor in, as well as maybe we reduce that $3 million at 15, for 15 years that we're planning on for 53rd, and maybe some redesign of 45th. Maybe we don't do the redesign of 45th and just focus on, on 53rd. Maybe that's what a little give and take we have to make because of Woodlawn coming in high, and then relying maybe more on our property tax growth. Or as always, you know, we're, we're looking at on line 19, where we kind of throw everything that we don't have any, we, we throw as much as we can in that capital improvement transferred for street improvements. And that's what Councilmember Welch is talking about in 2024, I believe, on line 19, or 2023, it's showing $276,000. Well, that, you know, it is going to take a hit in the early, short-term years. And that's primarily due because I have that 4% growth and our, 60% of our revenue is only growing at 4%. That, that has a, has a, an effect on it. Also, you know, personnel, we don't, we don't know where we're going to be. I, I, sometimes it, you know, it, it might increase or decrease from time to time. We've done some, some big changes this past year, so that, that number, we want to see that settle as well. So there's a lot of unknowns in a five-year forecast, as everybody knows, but it's important to look at when we make these types of big decisions. I will say, you know, adding $150,000 to a $7 million budget is, you know, is not a, not a huge breaker, but it's something that, the reason why we budget every year and we watch our bottom line and make sure we have enough reserves at the end of the year is to weather some of these storms that come up.
Right, but that $150,000 is only for 53rd Street. If we add in Woodlawn, now we're up to $400,000 total?
I'm sorry, the 100, the, the Woodlawn's already, already projected inside of the five years. So this is a full, Woodlawn price is projected into the next five years, as well as if we did $3 million for 53rd and either other, other projects. But with this result, I think $3 million, we probably better, just to make sure that's what we get for 53rd, we might plan for.
Okay, I'm, I'm still concerned. One, one of the biggest things that bothers me about this money is we're walking right back to the edge where we were a year ago. We spent a year and a half selling land and reorganizing debt to get to where we had some free space. And if we do these two projects, we're right on the edge again. We can't afford any mistake. If growth stops or inflation hits, we're, we're going to be right back to where we were three years ago, looking at cutting staff and things like that to, to make up the difference, because we'll already be committed to these bond payments, or we'll get to raise taxes a lot.
And that, and that's where I look at, you guys have set the priority and the sending, the spending authority of the city. And, and that's, like you said, it, that, the 53rd is the, $230,000 would be a $3 million bond at 15-year. You can stretch it out to 20 years. I know you don't like that and save a little per year.
If it was just one year, I'd be thrilled to do it. It's the 20 years that bothers me.
Exactly. No, no, I know you don't like it, but that's, that's one method you could use to lower your, your yearly payment. But, but yeah, this is the, the, the decision we have before us. But, you know, as Anne said, and I, I did say, it, it's leaving $6 million on the table if we do walk away, and that's what's hard for me to walk away from. But for my two cents is that, that's what the, the hard part on this decision is, is there's a $6 million sitting there.
I don't have any trouble with that at all if it depletes my pocketbook. Doesn't matter how much somebody else is putting in if it takes everything out of my pocket.
Mr. Mayor.
I think Mr. Schroder, Dr. Schroder had something he wanted to say.
Yeah, it just seems like to me, so the decision to do Woodlawn here was done, you know, four years ago, through whatever, a long time. And it seems like we've, we, I mean, I guess I didn't start it, but I guess I mean it as much as anybody is now. Okay, so we got so far down the road. If we go out, it's really bad. And if we stay in, it's bad, right? I, I have not, I have not heard any suggestions of what we're going to be able between, between here and the 15th or here and the 22nd, that, you know, I, I see A or B. It's bad if we do it, it's bad if we don't. But I don't, I have not heard of a third option. And I'm just kind of wanting to clarify, there is no third option, right? Like, no one knows of a third option?
Maybe there is a third option. Somebody threw out, we could do it ourselves. How much could we do ourselves and not get any funding from anybody else? If we can do 53rd for $2 million, can we do Woodlawn for three?
No. There's a substantial.
We might have to drop some things like those storm sewer or something like that. If we just widen the road a little bit, filled in some of the ditch and paved it to be a little wider, could we get by with that?
No, there's a substantial amount of storm sewer. And the mayor had mentioned that's one thing that maybe we could chunk out. Unfortunately, the road is designed, so all of the water from the, from the edges flows onto the road into the storm sewer and out. If you want to get out of the storm sewer, you have to raise the road to allow the water from the road to flow off the road into the ditches and out. And that's maybe not a, that, that would be pretty close to a complete redesign of the project. You would almost have to check everything out the window and start over again because of that storm sewer. It's a different concept with a design of the road.
And I'm okay with that, if we could do it for a lot less and just pay for it out of pocket without getting all these other people involved that are promising stuff that has ended up making this a $10 million project.
And with, with the railroad, and I think we would be okay with the work that we have done on the water and sewer. But you're talking, and I, I wouldn't have an idea of how much it would cost, but it would be probably another couple million dollars more than 53rd Street because of the, just the size of the project and the railroad. If we could possibly take out the traffic signal and just do the four-way stop as it is currently designed, the potential for the, the sidewalk that the mayor had mentioned earlier, that's also a possibility to take out. But a lot of the sidewalk leaves a little bit more problems because that's graded into the project. But a lot of these, these suggestions that the mayor had, other than the storm sewer, you're saving $100,000, $200,000. You're not, maybe up to a half a million if you take out the sidewalks and the, the traffic signal, but you're not getting where, you know, it's, it's, it's a chunk of change, but it's not enough of a chunk to get kind of, in my opinion, back where you want to be.
Okay, and what, that road, Woodlawn, seems to be better than 45th. What do you think the lifespan of the existing Woodlawn would be if we just start doing normal maintenance on it?
If you started, if we start doing maintenance on it, similar to what we have done on Oliver, it would need some cracks filled and sealed and patchwork done. And then it would need probably a thin lift overlay or some sort of treatment such as that. You're buying yourself another probably four to five years.
Okay, and that would cost us $100,000, $200,000? PP&amp;J didn't charge us all that much for what they did.
Right, but it's, it's not just the crack sealing and the thermal crack repair that PP&amp;J did over on Oliver. You'd also want to put some sort of surfacing treatment on it, because we are losing. I'd say you're probably somewhere in the, probably under half a million. Probably 300 to 500. There's also a few repairs that need to be. There's also a few repairs that need to be made to the side of the road that we left from the water and sewer project in anticipation of this that need to be taken care of. But that's not gonna get you over that half a million dollar mark.
The one thing everybody tells me about wood lawn that they really want is the traffic signal. They don't care about anything else, they want a traffic signal. So what if we just did that? That's a $500,000 project, a $200,000 project?
You're probably running about a million dollars on that because you would need to make improvements to the geometry of that intersection. You need to put in turn lanes in order to make it useful. Because as it is now, if somebody wants, say I'm going north on wood lawn and there's somebody in front of me that needs to turn left, there's no room for them to get over to the side so I can move forward. And if there's the cross traffic, you, you're backing it out.
What if we put in a staggered light where each street gets a green 1/4 of the time?
It's, it's certainly doable.
And we don't need left turn lanes or right turn lanes?
It's certainly doable. You do, I do, I get calls when people sit for 20 seconds at lights. And so that would be, you know, we'd be getting more calls that way and complaining citizens. But that it is certainly could be looked into.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do want to get into some of the alternatives in that discussion. I think that's good, but I first want to go back to Mr. Ted Henry's comments on the finances and ask, can you please, line 27, line 29, and line 30, can you walk me through those lines, what's included in those lines? And explain the year aspect of it in terms of when the payments start coming on for each of those lines and why?
Sure. Line 27, which was wood lawn design. So the way we finance is much like most cities, some cities don't, but we first go to a temporary note. And that gives us three years to get the absolute cost of that particular improvement. And then we go to permanent bonds. So if, if you see something come on, it's about three years prior. So wood lawn design was 2016 or 2017, 18, 19, 20. So yeah, 2017 started and we spent 620, 612,577 on design and engineering as well as surveying. That comes on in 2022. It's already been budgeted for, it's about 40,500 for 20 years. The 150, 170,000 expense is just that street that connects the Central Park here to 53rd Street, pretty small street. But that was tied in with Central, Central Park Third Edition, and it was a city's portion. So we just kept it in with that. So that comes on in 2025. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, 2025 because we just, we just temp noted for that. Wood lawn construction, so this is the first 1.8 million of our, when we went to temp note, we, we had our estimates and that's where it's been all along was, hey, it's around $2 million for that original estimate. So I went ahead and temp noted. So when we get to this point, I have the money in the bank to just hand over to KDOT and say, hey, here's our share. Go build wood lawn. So that's what's happening with that money, and that will hit our books in 2024.
Because we temp noted it?
Because we temp noted it.
Okay.
And line 30 would be the extra we need to cover the increases since we temp noted that original. So the total cost from wood lawn would be 4.43, so that's 2.5 plus 1.8 million.
And the payment on the new debt service at 150,000 a year is more than we projected on the original debt service, which was 125,000 a year. Is, and, and that's due to the amounts, right? Because they're both 20-year, is that right?
They're both 20-year as I project right here.
Okay, so we originally thought we were gonna pay 1.8 million for the project. Now we're going to, based on these numbers, we're gonna pay 1.8 million for the plot, project, plus an additional 2.5 million for the project. And so instead of 125,000 a year for wood lawn for the next 20 years, it's gonna be 275,000 a year for wood lawn for the next 20 years.
And for full disclosure, if you look back, it originally was 125 is what I kind of been doing as a conservative estimate. But since I, now we know some cost, I lowered it back down to what actually 1.5 or 1.8 would cost us if we had a 3% bond in 2024. So just to be, if you're looking at a past five year, you'll see 150. So in my report, it's really like we increased 125,000 a year instead of 150. Sorry, that's just estimates.
I, I think that's really helpful, and I think it really underscores why this feels so painful to sit up here and, and see these numbers is because, you know, the, the real numbers that we're looking at now are actually more than twice or maybe exactly twice what we thought it was gonna cost us out of pocket every year. And that, you know, that, that makes us a really big decision for us because maybe we thought we were gonna do wood lawn and 45th Street, or wood lawn and Oliver, or wood lawn and Rock. And instead, now we're, if we move forward, it's just gonna be wood lawn. Now balancing that out with the fact that, yes, there's still $6 billion in matching funds is a real thing. We don't know that this project can be cheaper. I, I do hear from citizens and I see myself that wood lawn's a problem and we need to do something about wood lawn. Not doing anything about wood lawn, of course, I don't think is something that our, our, our citizens want to see. And I do hear a lot of feedback on the, the value of the sidewalks, the value of the bike path. That's something that, that everyone's looking forward to, and I think it's an excellent amenity for our community. Also, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I don't remember those being the things that were significant cost drivers in the project. So I guess maybe one question, then I'll, I'll be done for now, is if, if we were to look at the project and we were to say, here's a line item that we want to go at this point to, to save money, for example. Let's just say we want the traffic light gone for now. And I'm not proposing that because I think the traffic light needs to save. But just hypothetically, we say, nope, don't want the traffic light. We want to save that 250,000 off the project. Is that an option that we have at this point? Can we say that? Can we save that money? Can we make changes to the design and still move forward as is?
That will be a question that I'll have to pose to KDOT. But I would say that we should be able to make changes to the project as far as removing certain items. The question is going to be, how does that affect the design of the overall project? Every single piece of this is integral to the others. And so taking one piece out, you know, if it's, it's removing trees from the project, you know, that's a fairly simple removal. But when we start kind of picking and choosing, it's, you have, we have to work closely with KDOT as well as with our design engineers to make sure, number one, we can do it without it affecting the overall project. And then number two, that KDOT's okay with it because they have to play by all these federal rules. So there's also a portion where you get in many contracts in my background, which have not been KDOT projects. If you remove a certain portion, dollar figure from the contractor, the contractors do a loss of profit because they had that scheduled and put in with their design. I'm not saying that this is the case, but I'm preparing you that that may be a discussion point coming up. If we chunk out enough of the project under the KDOT guidelines, that that may be something that we're also wrestling with.
Mr. Mayor.
I've got another question for Ted. I'm sorry, real quick here. If, if we do not do the wood lawn project, that 1.8 million we've already borrowed, can we just pay it back or can we use it on another project? Is it bound in any way to certain uses?
No, it just sits there and you can give it back. I will say we, we're 265,000 with right-of-way acquisition, a little extra engineering, rail, and cost of issuance into that, that 1.8 right now as we sit. As well as, and I, I think you mentioned it, you know, the, the utility relocations were about 900,000. You know, we're further along into those and some upgrades as well, but.
So we've spent a considerable bit of it already?
We're, we're 900, yeah, like 1.1 or so.
My, my thought was that we might just use the whole thing for 53rd, but it's not all still there.
The 1.8 is only, only tied to the, what's the general fund's gonna pay. So that's only the paving and storm, storm sewer. The utility accounts will, will do the, utility is picking up the debt service for the relocation.
Is it available for 53rd then, the 1.8? If we don't do wood lawn?
I, I think, Kevin, yeah, it would be, you, you'd have to pass the authorization and restate.
Because that's most of our 53rd project. I'm, I'm taking too much time from Dr. Schroder.
Mr. Mayor. It seems like, you know, the painfulness of going to not having any breathing room is obviously painful for all of us here, and I recognize that. It seems like one thing I haven't heard discussion on is 53rd's a $3 million project. I wanted to ask Ann. Ann, when you originally gave us the 53rd project, you gave us a not as good, cheaper version of doing that project for not 3 million, correct? Could you just kind of remind us what that was?
Sure. So the, the initial estimate of 53rd was based on a project similar to what we have done on 53rd Street between wood lawn and Rock or between Rock and Webb. So we would not be doing any realignment. We would not be doing any grade adjustments. The wood lawn intersection with 53rd Street to the west has always been a problem with people sliding back down in the winter. That would not be fixed. We would still probably go through and try, if there's corrugated metal pipes underneath the pavement, we would try and redo those. But it would just be, your, your width is what it is. It would not be widened, it would not be improved. You're just be putting a more durable surface on the road.
What was the cost of that? It was, it was way, way like, I, I hate to guess, maybe you don't either, but I.
It was in the neighborhood of probably 1.5 million, and please don't quote me on that. It's just, I've slipped numerous times since then and I have not looked at that cost estimate recently.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I have some questions. I guess my first question, I got a couple, is for Mr. Henry. And forgive me if you've covered this already, I'm getting lost in the numbers here. But my first one is on line 39, the percent of revenues, which is our reserves, right? You know, it ticks down to 20% in 2027. Is that as low as it goes when we continue into the future? Like 2028, does it, does it go beyond that? Or is 20%, the bottom?
So, yeah, if you'll see, look at line 19 in 2027. We're, we're back up to almost a million that we're transferring into, to the streets. So theoretically, if we're in that budget season, we're not doing a million, we're transferring, leaving some in to make up that 30%. So what, this is just a kind of a five-year that, that shows what happens when we throw more debt onto what our existing structure is. So it, it's not a perfect science, meaning we're gonna shore up our reserves to meet that threshold or wherever S and P or our bond rating would, would like that to be. So I, I don't want you to think we're a downwards spiral from here. We, we budget each year and we'll, we'll make our decisions accordingly. I think it's more of looking at line 19 and saying, you know, that, that, that goes a little thin in the short term and then grows rapidly. And that's mainly due to, like I said, our growth and the property, the property taxes are the big, the big driver of this five-year forecast.
Okay, thank you. I, I have a couple additional questions. First would be a follow-up comment to that. I guess when you look at line 19, the capital improvement plan, I share, everyone appears concerned that expressed, well, their concern over basically zeroing out what we might be able to have available to do improvements. But I don't know, looking at those numbers, I don't know, I'm not convinced it's. I'm struggling with it, but I'm just trying to talk through this. I, I'm not convinced it's as dire. Like, if that number had continued flat from the 2023 number, for example, look, basically quarter million, that'd be more concerning? It's not, I don't know, I guess I'm interpreting that to be not quite as concerning. We have been, you know, looking at it from kind of an optimistic standpoint. We, we have a lot of conservatism in our budget and the way Mr. Henry calculates these numbers. There is a sense, based on history, that we'll have perhaps more than that available in the end. I'm just trying to apply our, you know, kind of a realistic view, peeling away some conservatism, if you will. I, I have a couple questions. So the final number, I guess I was confused, maybe you already addressed this, but I still, on that, on the letter, on page 22, it's 4.3 million for the city's share. But then on our invoice, it's 3.8 million. Did I miss, did I miss what, what that difference was?
So the 4.3 includes all the non-participating. So the 3.8 that KDOT's requesting is just the participating amount that we have to pay them. So all the right-of-way and rail expenses, all the cost of issuance. What else we got? There's some private line utility relocation. There's, there's quite a few little line items that the city has to pay 100% of, and that's what makes that back up to, from 3.8 to 4.3.
Isn't engineering included in that number as well?
Engineering is, and, and the only reason I don't say that is because line, we've already bonded for the, a majority, a vast majority of the engineering, so worry, pain, can't do anything about that, we're done.
It's spent money, I get that.
Thank you. Let's see. I guess I, I have a question for Mr. Mayor, and I guess it's also for everyone else to answer. I'm struggling to land on a number. But if, if you're leaning towards not going forward based on these numbers before us, what is the acceptable number or what is the acceptable, perhaps, debt service amount per year that we would find acceptable? I, I feel like, you know, 53rd Street's gotta be done somehow, whether it's what we have planned before us or the cheaper option that Dr. Schroder was mentioning. Yeah, I, I, I don't know. I, I mean, obviously, we were, all had the $2 million in our head for a long time. That number has creeped up. I'm trying to look through here what, you know, in my line of work, we, we work from assessing risk from a really conservative approach, kind of like what we're doing here in our budget. But when you hit, you hit the big, the big red X comes across your desk and you think, all right, now I gotta go back to the drawing board, sharpen our pencils and start peeling away layers of conservatism in our estimates. And what is reality, right? Like, what, what if we look at this with raw numbers? And yeah, that kind of assesses risk a little differently. But I don't know if there's a way to, to do that here tonight. But I guess, what kind of, what kind of number would be acceptable, acceptable? Either the total amount from 3.8 million or what our yearly cost would be? I don't have a number myself, but I'm just tossing that question out to everybody, starting with the mayor, I guess.
So in, in my opening statement about this, I said that I want to see us get some combination of a 2.56 million dollar reduction off the, the burden of the citizens of Bel Air. That can be additional funding from other grant sources. I, like, for instance, one possibility is the, the bike path paid for by a grant rather than through this project. I don't know that that's a reality, I'm just saying, maybe there's something out there. Other things you can do is, is reduce the scope of the project by taking some things out of there. So it's a combination of things. I don't think it, it's one issue, but that's, that's the target that I, I want to see us try to drive towards. And I realize that maybe with this, if this October 15th date is the drop dead date, we've got a lot, got a lot of work to do next week to see if there's any opportunities there. But that's the kind of thing I'm looking at. Looking at a little bit of both, not one or the other. I don't think it's that way. I just think, what can, what can we realistically do? At the end of the day, want a good quality product that the citizens will be pleased with, but do we need all of these whistles and bells? I don't know that that, I don't know the answer to that, and I'm not. I don't know that that, I don't know the answer to that, and I'm not saying I do, okay? But I do want us to take a serious look at that and say, what is that? What about it?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, at present, I'm probably, you know, I'm def, I definitely want us to really make sure that we think through this. I guess I'm wondering, do we have access to the line level bid information so that we can just get a ballpark idea? Say, you know, Mr. Mayor, you threw out the bike path idea. Like, if we were able to get that bike path paid for through another grant, do we, do, do we have access to that list of line item level cost information so that we can just understand really even the potential for impacting this cost in any material way? Uh, I think that could be really helpful. And then, I guess, just more broadly, I, I really feel like we, we do need to move forward with the Woodlawn project, as, you know, as disappointed as I am in how this impacts our ability to do other projects. I'm probably more in favor of revisiting the, the approach to the 53rd project as, as opposed to not moving forward with Woodlawn just at these two seconds. I reserve the right to be wrong and change my mind there.
And do you think we could get anything from anybody within the next 13, 12 days
so that we could see a reduced cost, or is this going to be just, we either have to vote it up or down before the 15th, and, and if we miraculously get money in the future, then that lowers our costs, but...
I can work, I can certainly start discussions with KDOT, um, as far as value engineering this project and seeing things that can be cut out. It would need to be a discussion with MKEC as the design engineer, as what items could be safely removed from the project without impacting it overtly as far as requiring a redesign. Um, I can certainly get that within the next 12 days. As far as, um, other items, as far as specific numbers, those would be a little bit harder to come by, but I could certainly get, you know, an idea of work with, um, both the city manager and MKEC and KDOT, and kind of trying to discuss what, what could be pulled out and how much that would amount to, if it's, if KDOT will even let us.
Do they fill out that bid form like we've seen on some other projects, where they kind of say, this line item costs this much?
They did, and KDOT holds that as, as confidential until the bid has been approved and it is released to the public. They do not release that because of confidentiality with other bidders.
Okay.
But we do have the MKEC estimates, and we could probably make some projection from those estimates, what the real numbers might be.
Potentially.
You won't know exactly. I get that.
Potentially. And I, I could also work with KDOT to see if we could get that estimate. It's just, it's, it's, as the attorney can kind of help me out here, um, it's just that whole confidentiality thing, and I'm not sure, you know, once, as far as the Cora, the, the records go, how that would work when it comes into city hands.
Right. Any specific, um, conversation on the, the, uh, bids before they were finalized and released would happen in executive session. So, if you needed to have this conversation in workshop, we could enter a special meeting, or we could set aside a special meeting to have, um, an executive session to go through those items.
Yeah. Well, certainly isn't good business practice to release those numbers until it fills an agreement. I get that. That makes perfect sense. We do not have 12 days, though. You've got nine working days at the most, and then we would have to have a special session on the 14th to vote for this, if we're going to do it. I think...
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. If we do have any flexibility, it'll be in, in trying to take a couple more days to get KDOT that letter, but as Ann said, KDOT's usually pretty firm on their date, so maybe planning on that nine days, and we can try to see if we can...
Look at how many months it took to get here, once it went to KDOT. Yeah. I don't hell do I hope we'll hear, we'll even hear back from them in nine days. This is my...
Mr. Mayor, I guess I just have a thought. I'm just throwing it out there. So, uh, obviously 53rd needs to be addressed, one way or the other. You know, we have a history of 30,000 to 40,000 every four to six months or so, throwing at 53rd. The latest one is 60,000.
Right.
Um, I mean, we could just continue limping along on 53rd, spending a lot less money. You know, it's probably worth it keeping it open. I, I don't know. I'm just thinking in terms of total, how, how to protect for moving forward with the Woodlawn project, because, I mean, the timeline we're looking at, the amount of money we're talk, talking about, and the lack of clear information that we, you know, would like to have and probably aren't going to get, um, this, uh, this stinks, but I, I, gosh, I don't know. I, I'm looking at this right now from a perspective of how can we move forward with the Woodlawn. Um, 53rd Street is kind of a known, we can kind of watch it, monitor it, fix as we go. It, it helps protect our budget, um, at least for a couple of years more. I don't know. I mean, I, I could foresee us going another five years, spending, what, $100,000 a year on 53rd, and we can manage that. Um, it's, it's not what people want. I, I understand that, uh, but that's an option here, I think. We haven't talked about it.
I think those are, are certainly things we should just consider and discuss. Uh, the reason I asked to table this is to give us the time to do that. I realize the time, the clock is short, but it's still a clock that's there that we're not at the, we're not at the 11th hour yet, okay? So, that's why I asked to table this item, to give us that chance to talk about it. We may, probably will talk about it at workshop if we, if we table it, and, uh, and, uh, see what we can come up with from there.
Mr. Mayor, um, something I'm considering as well is like, if we don't do Woodlawn now, when are we going to have $8 million to do Woodlawn? Woodlawn won't get done for, like, 25 years? I mean, I don't know. I'm, I, I, I mean, whatever number is going to be so far down the road, it's about silly to think about, because if we don't do it now, I, I mean, I'm going to be thinking about retirement when we're done.
Yeah, I'm not saying don't do it. I, I, I don't intend to give that pressure. I just think we need to give this due diligence to make sure that what we're doing, we're, we're going in with our eyes wide open about, okay? And that, give us that time to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate your suggestion, you know, to table this. I, I do want Woodlawn to move forward, and at this point, I support moving forward with it, but I, I certainly always want to make sure we have all the right information. We've explored all the alternatives, so, um, if we think that we can have some additional information to talk about by workshop, that certainly sounds like an okay idea to me.
Just for staff, and I guess I said last time I'm not going to use that word, so for Ann and Ted purposes, uh, what would you like to, what would you like to see? Uh, bid tabulation, what happened, and then, uh, the way I, do you want me to keep line 31 at 3 million for 15, or do you want to see a five-year forecast that, um, maybe only does 2 million at, at 15, and then see how our budget looks on, or our out-years budgets on that? Um, what kind of changes would you like to see in the workshop? I, I just don't want to do unnecessary work, or you guys don't want to see unnecessary work?
Well, I, I think we can drop some of the cost of line 31, because we're at the point now where we can't afford to fix any roads. We don't need to be spending 500,000 to figure out how to fix 45th.
Yep.
That's just money we won't have, and if we got something from WAMPO, we couldn't match it.
And would we have any updated numbers? Could we reach out? Uh, because I know we approved the design. I, I don't, I don't even know if we've signed the contract yet with, for the design of 53rd, but, uh, would we have any updated numbers other than the kind of $2 million by next week?
Not by next week.
Okay.
Um, we did sign the contract with Garver for that, and they are diligently working on it, but I believe they had, their initial timeline was one to two months on getting a harder estimate for us, a more solid estimate.
Yeah, that's what I remembered.
And I'd, I'd also just like to mention that it, it is a money discussion, but the longer we wait on 53rd Street, we're going to have more and more houses built and people living there, and so that's also a consideration, because it's going to cost the contractor more. There's going to be additional phases to allow those people ingress and egress out of their development. So, just, you know, you don't have anything to consider tonight, but just, you know, to add one more little thing to that.
Can we do something to 53rd to reduce heavy traffic?
Not with the construction going on.
Yeah, okay, but I mean, school buses, any through trucks or anything like that? I understand the construction problem. We kind of got to let them build, but...
The school buses, we can certainly reach out to, um, 259 to see if they're, they'd be willing to take a different route. I mean, they, they obviously had to, and 53rd Street was closed to through traffic. Um, I, I can't really say how well that would work.
That's certainly one thing we can threaten, that is, if they keep driving school buses down there, we're going to be closing it every two months. You know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, oh, yeah. And it's, it's going to be on the chief and his department to enforce that, but we've got signs that say, you know, weight limit on certain roads, and they are, just aren't followed. So, it's, it becomes an enforcement issue, which is, it's only as good as the amount of time that you have out there to enforce those issues and...
Could take 100 feet out of the road in the middle someplace, and then there would be no through traffic.
That's true.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
Uh, Mr. Henry asked about, you know, specific items for the workshop. I think what I've, what I've heard from our discussion is we'd really like to understand, first, what amount of flexibility we have to address project changes, should we want to do so? And so I think that probably includes some information from a conversation that hopefully you can have with KDOT between now and then, so that we understand what, if any, flexibility we have to change the project scope at this point. Secondly, if we're able to, uh, understand the kind of line level costing information, even if it's in an executive session, so that we can understand, uh, removing line one, you know, would, would take the debt down by 150,000 or 500,000, and a menu of those options, even if it's just based on your understanding from seeing that bid tabulation in a confidential way, a menu of options that we can at least consider that might be impactful, I think would be, would be good to have as part of that discussion. Those are the, kind of the two things that I think I've heard so far.
I, I think that's pretty accurate. The, the only other thing I think we've already said, but just to reiterate, if you can, can learn of any other funds that we can use for this, and I don't know what that would be. I, I don't have that crystal ball bit, anything. Maybe we'll get lucky and they'll pass this infrastructure bill in the next couple of days, but I don't know.
I know. I, with, with working on this list, I will not have time to look into other funding options. Um, my other question is, we usually send the packet out, I believe, on Thursday or Friday. Um, with this list of items, it's going to be difficult to get that put together in that timeframe.
Right.
So, if, I could also have some direction from council on that?
I would be, I would be okay with you not having a complete, completed by Thursday, by packet time, that you can bring it to the workshop.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I would be okay with that. I, I know you need time. Well, we won't be taking binding action, so I, all we really need to do is put the item on, but that's what we're going to talk about. It's not binding action. It's just, it's a discussion. So, as much information you give us Thursday, give it to us in a packet. We know that you'll get more information as you continue to do your research.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
We may want to consider, instead of having a workshop on Tuesday, just having a regular meeting that we're, we dedicate to discussion on this, so that if we do want to take action, we can, uh, and also so that if we need to have an executive session for the purposes of the confidential information, we can do that as well. So, I, I, I kind of think that we should hold a regular meeting and just have it be fully dedicated to a lot of robust discussion.
I, I would prefer that as well. Uh, the, the other shoe on this is our relationship with KDOT and making sure we are timely. Uh, not that we would surpass it, but I think it will pay dividends, because if you remember, we got some other big projects going on. We want to be the best partners as we can be, but however, due diligent with our funds as well.
And so, within that context, of course, that maybe changes, uh, you know, how we would think about the packet, because we want the packet to be sent out for a meeting where we're going to take action as soon as we can, so that we make sure we've had time to thoroughly review the material. I think in this case, it's a bit of an exception in that we are on a timetable here, and I prefer to have more accurate and more complete information instead of having that information sooner. And so, to kind of offset the fact that we won't have a lot of time to review this information in advance, I think we're going to have to be prepared to spend a lot of time reviewing this information during the meeting.
Okay. Okay, I kind, I kind of agree with that. I was thinking about having the meeting later in the week, but can we schedule the meeting for something like 8 o'clock instead of 7:00 and, and start the workshop and beat our brains out for an hour, hour and a half, and then have, go into regular meetings so that it's at a certain time that people can... Or do you think there's any value in that? I, I just don't...
I think it's just a label for our meeting, whether it's a workshop or not, so I don't think...
Okay. The difference is at workshop, you can't take binding.
Yeah, so...
I guess we're clear down at the end here. Would we still have it at 6:00, or would we have it at 7:00? Well, the workshop was normally scheduled for 6:30, but, uh, if, I'll, I'll defer to anybody that wants to change that time to, uh, is it 7:00 or is it 6:00? Uh, 6:00 can be a little tough. 6:30 is what I meant, but do we need to add an agenda item then to, uh, motion for a special meeting to be held next week?
We can do that. Um, the special meeting ordinance requires that it be a written request made by three members of the governing body. So, I think that can, you know, if three people agree, that can, um, that special meeting can be requested that way.
Okay, well, I'll agree to it, however we can get to it.
Okay, right.
So, Mr. Mayor, um...
Mr. Smith.
I, I think we'll go ahead and make a motion to table the resolution certifying the city pledges the required amount to match the, the federal funds.
I'll second.
Uh, do you want to add that we'll table it until next Tuesday? Instead of ending up, okay.
You can go either way.
Yeah, either one's fine. All right. Are you amending your motion, Mr. Smith?
Sure.
Are you accepting it?
Sure.
Or Dr. Schroeder? Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor of tabling this item until our next meeting, uh, special meeting on the 12th, I believe it is. Is that right? Or is the 13th?
No, I'm just going to make sure.
It'll be the 12th, October 12th. Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Motion carries four to zero. That item is tabled. Item B is, is the...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Um, before proceeding, uh, I'd like to request we take a five-minute recess.
Me too.
Okay. Making a motion for a five-minute recess?
I'd like to motion that we take a five-minute recess.
I'll second.
Have a motion filed by Els, Mr. Elssof, and second by Schroder, Dr. Schroder. Any discussion? Not on these, so I'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion. Motion carries four to zero. We're on recess for five minutes. Just moving on to item B. This is the resolution authorizing completion of certain improvements to Woodlawn Avenue and authorize issuance of general obligation bonds. And as I requested earlier, being as we tabled item A, I think this item should be tabled as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schroeder, Dr. Schroeder.
I'll motion to table item B until the 12th, October 12th.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Schroeder, and second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foul, same sign. This item is tabled until October 12th. Item C is ordinance authorizes the city of Bel Air to issue industrial revenue bonds. So Clinic in a Can has completed construction of their new building in the Sunflower Commerce Park. They are now ready for permanent financing via IRB. Council held a public hearing and passed a resolution to issue an IRB for Clinic in a Can on September 1st, 2020. This ordinance authorized issuance of the IRB and signing of related documents. Kevin Cowan with Gilmore &amp; Bell is here to answer any questions. At least he was. I guess you're here to ask the questions.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Steele. I'm Kevin Cowan's law partner at Gilmore &amp; Bell, and Kevin, yeah, was here for A and B.
He didn't want to say for C.
No, I actually came for C, so...
I see, very good.
The mayor accurately reported that we're taking final action to approve the execution of all the necessary documents. As always, this is not a liability of the city in any way. It doesn't count as debt against the city. Simply helps this project with a property tax exemption that starts out at 100% and declines 10% per year for the full 10 years. And they also received a sales tax exemption on all the materials that went into construction. I don't believe that's the facility, but that's what they're building inside, so... Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the city of Bel Air, Kansas, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bond, Series 2021A, and Series 2021B, Clinic in a Can, for the purpose of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a warehouse and office facility, and authorizing certain other related documents and actions.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, and second by Dr. Schroeder. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foul, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Moving on to item D is police department maintains a fleet of seven patrol cars. As mileage and age of vehicles increase, the city must replace them to limit the cost of repairs as well as downtime. The 2021 capital improvement budget allows for the purchase of one replacement vehicle this year. Chief Adderbury is here to explain the replacement and answer any questions. At least he was. Yes, he's still there.
He's still there. Have to wake him up, maybe. Do we get a discount since this car's so old? I know it's in new condition, but it is a 2020.
It is, and you can't get a 2021. This is like one of the only ones around in the U.S. that's still available, and that's because TCS was forward-thinking and ordered a few and kept one aside just for us, because they knew we were going to ask for one this year.
That was nice to hear.
Yes, they are a very good business partner for us.
And we cannot get any 2021s, and we have no idea if 2022s will be available any time.
They haven't even put them out for bid.
Okay. Just want to clarify that for the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
This will replace our last of the Dodge Chargers. Is that true?
That is correct.
Are we still, are you still happy with the selection of these, the Ford SUVs, as opposed to the typical, you know, police car?
Yes. We like, we like the SUVs for a couple of reasons. One, there's more space. Two, trying to get down inside of a sedan is different than getting into an SUV, and there are studies after studies involving lower back pain and knee injuries to officers. Just, you know, getting in and out of a patrol car, sometimes 20, 30 times a day, it can wear on you. So the SUV, not having to go down low and then come back up high from a sedan, being able to get in at a more level, in a level way, is easier on your back. And I'm, I celebrated my 40th year today, and I think, you know, my opinion is, the SUV has kept my back from, and my knees from aching as much as they used to with a car.
No, thank you for that explanation. The only other question that I have is, you know, with this being a 2020 model, are we purchasing it new, so we still have the typical warranty that would accompany a new car, you know, starting probably, I'm guessing, three years from the day that we buy it on a Ford?
It's got the same, same mileage. Those are mileage-based, so yes, it's sitting there.
It's exclusively mileage-based on the warranty, or mileage and time?
I don't think there's any time element.
Okay. It may be different when it's purchased through the state contract. I think some vehicles, I hear them advertised, are five years, 60,000 mile, or three years, 36,000 mile, whichever comes first.
Usually, a police patrol car runs out of miles before the warranty's up.
Okay.
Now, this 2016 vehicle number 29, we've had it for quite a while.
Okay.
And we've actually kept it longer than what we like to keep cars, because when you keep the cars, patrol cars, police patrol cars, longer, then you start having maintenance concerns with suspensions and drivetrains and such, so we've kept it around. We're not using it very much right now because of those concerns.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schroeder.
I have lots of thoughts and things about cars and whatnot, but this is probably not the year to talk about any of those, with the situation that the car market is in, everything. I think this is the absolute option.
Two birds and a road.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you picked ideal timing here.
Yeah. So I think in the future, it'll be interesting to consider other things, but for this year, I don't think there's any other choice, so I think it'll be, I'm all for it. And I will go ahead and make the motion to approve the purchase of one Ford Explorer at the cost of 48,443, and authorize the city manager to sign related documents.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Schroeder, and second by Mr. Smith. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I guess I do have one comment.
Mr. Helsof.
And that is, congratulations on your 40th.
Thank you.
And we're glad you're here.
Thank you very much.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foul, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. He gets a 40th anniversary cruiser. Okay. Moving on to item E, consideration of a bid paving and drainage improvements. So the developer of Chapel Hill Landing Fourth is ready to proceed with paving and drainage improvements. Four contractors responded to the request for bids, with Kansas paving being the low bidder. The cost of these improvements will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. Ann is here to explain the project and answer any questions. There she is.
It's only temporarily our money. Then it gets passed on to other people.
Right.
Chapel Landing Fourth is a area that was replatted from the initial Chapel Landing development. It is shown in the red on the screen. The water and sewer have been installed already. They're getting that wrapped up as we speak. So the developer did go out for paving bids on this. Kansas, they did choose, choose to bid only concrete paving. We always like to see both concrete and asphalt, but the developer chose to bid concrete on this one. Kansas paving was the low bidder at 246,886. We've worked with them multiple times and have had good luck with them. If you have any additional questions, I'd happy to be, I would be happy to stand for them.
Kansas paving must be a little hungrier this month. They came in with a low bid.
I've been told that there's not a whole lot of development projects being put out on the streets at this time.
Mr. Mayor? I'll motion to accept the bid from Kansas paving and the cost not to exceed 246,886 for paving and drainage improvements to serve Chapel Landing Fourth and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Schroeder, and second by Mr. Welsh. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foul, same sign. Motion carries four to zero. Item 13, executive session, and I have no need for an executive session, does anyone else? Hearing none, I'll move on to item 14, discussion of future issues. So a regular scheduled workshop is October 12th at 6:30 p.m., but now we've decided to make that a city council meeting. So regular city council meeting. Are we going to stay with the 6:30 p.m. time? I mean, if anybody's...
I think that's fine. I think it'll be a long meeting, probably.
Okay. Let's stay with the 6:30 meeting time, and we will primarily focus on the Woodlawn project discussion and the side discussion, 53rd Street, and what the implications of that will be, doing Woodlawn, and how we want to manage through this. Would be good if we could talk about gravel roads, if that's a possibility, but I think that's not going to happen. And so I think that's probably a full agenda there, okay? And I did notice, and if you would take a note about this maybe sometime, I know you don't have a lot of spare time, but sometime, take a look at 53rd Web to Rock Road. Lots of cracks in that road. Are we doing anything to seal those up, get those, keep them from causing problems in the winter? That's a cement road. I don't know, I think it's less than 10 years old, but I don't know when it was built, exactly. So anyway, it's a concern. I just wanted to bring it out and point it out, so, okay? At that, I think...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just on discussion and future issues, are we still working towards a letter to our state legislators on the, being able to put things on the ballot?
Yes, yeah, I've kind of had some time crunches, but I think I can get that to you by your second meeting in October to get approved, so we can get it out by the end of the month, if that's okay?
Okay.
I'll set that for the goal.
Great, very good. Look forward to that.
I've got a question also about workshops. Are we going to schedule one in November, since we have a potential changeover of council members?
Right now, we do not have a council, because I believe it's on, yeah, it's on election night, I think.
No, it'll be the 12th.
Oh, the 12th, so, no, we do not plan.
It'll be the 9th.
We plan to take election, election workshop off, so far.
I was just thinking about the issues that would have been scheduled for this month, where we would move them to.
Yeah.
We can discuss that with Ty for that, but I think as well with, let the election come out, and then definitely go through those codes and scooter issues, and maybe get them ready for early in the year. If not, December is available. If December's available, we can do that.
Very good, thank you. Anything else to discuss on future issues? If not, move on to adjournment if you want.
I'll motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion from Dr. Schroeder, and second by Mr. Welsh. Any discussion to adjourn? Everyone wants to talk about that, so. Call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foul, same sign. We are adjourned.